Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to 2018 Candidate Forum Program for the Howard County. This program is sponsored by the League of Korean Americans Association of Howard County and the Chinese American Parents Association of Howard County. We're trying to start promptly, except we still have this walking in. And as a candidate, we're going to go down to an opening speech by the two association presidents. First, I'd like to invite Ms. Jean from Kappa. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Susan Lee. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm on Saturday morning again.
Good morning.
That is much better. So hello, welcome, and thank you for coming to this event. My name is Jean Chu. I'm the president of Chinese American Association. So showing up is very, very important, and so I'm very thankful that we have almost a whole room today. And that shows you really care about our community and want to be a voter and want to be a responsible citizen. Thank you so much. And thanks to Beijing Chinese School, Chihwan, for your support. And League of Korean Americans, Korean American Senior Center of Howard County, and for your support. And I'd like to thank all the candidates today for coming. And I know you have been very busy these days, right? Door knocking, canvassing, and talking to thousands of people, talking to millions of foreigners. So it's a very exhausting job, and thank you for being willing to step out and serve our community. Thank you so much. And so our committee chair, hi, I'll pass to Jean Smith.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I didn't want to do a tiny speech, but she has taken all of my speech. So all I wanted to tell you, I would like to thank all for coming. I know it's on Saturday, one of the sleepy ladies, you know, I lounge around in the house, but you took the time to come and show your participations for the civic duty of engagement of all the citizens should be doing. And also want to thank you, all the candidates. And this is incredible. Personally, for me, because this is my first experience, I am voting. I am an election judge, but having this kind of communities come together and try to get everybody to be involved in the election process. But with that said, I just want to tell you, the important day to remember is November 6th, right?
Yes.
What day is it?
Election Day.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, Election Day, right? So please get up and vote. Should they be actively participating in the process? And then we care about our children's education and aging populations. I have CASA, Korean Senior Association of Howard County President is here. We have 150 members, and we should be working, there are many amazing calculations in Howard County. So with that said, you're looking forward to have those populations benefiting their well-being, healthy living conditions, and quality of life. Thank you so much.
So again, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Sung Lee. I'm going to be one of the most outstanding emcees for today. And then I was going to have our best emcee, Ms. Kray, introduce herself, and then we'll go to begin.
Good morning, everybody. I'm one of the moderators here for today's event. My name is Kray Zhao. Kray stands for sunflower in Chinese. And I live in Howard County. I grew up in my family in Pennsylvania, I lived in Howard County 17 years ago. Actually, it was early in October, so it's 17 years already. And I live in Elkhurst City. I wear a magical government wear hat. And next, I would like to introduce my colleague, Lee, another moderator for today's event. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Lee. I am also a Howard County resident. I also work for a government body and perform a bunch of fundamental duties. And I'm very honored to be here as a moderator. And with that said, we're going to move on to the ground rules for the candidates. Each candidate will be allowed to have two minutes of open statement. Questions listed from age organizations will be asked. Each candidate will be allowed one minute to respond to each question. Written questions for candidates will be submitted by the audience. The question, the question will be pre-screened by the Kappa Loke Committee and will be asked by the forum moderators. Each candidate will be allowed to have one minute to respond to each question. Each candidate will be allowed to present a one-minute closing statement. Tandem will be strictly enforced, which means that they will cut the mic off soon as they decide. And so you're going to complete, and you won, you'll be good. And a complete video of the forum will be recorded and may publicly available after the forum via YouTube-based footage setting. We will make sure that it goes out there positively.
Thank you, Lee. I'd like to read your compliance rules for the audience. First, eating and drinking beverages are prohibited during the forum meeting session, but others, yes. Please silence your phones. I remember that Mary's Ridge High School always announced in the audience how people were to show stuff. Please silence your phones. A phone call could be made in the hallway. The third one, if you have to leave the conference room, candidate can wait. Please wait until a candidate or the moderator finishes the talk. The fourth one, please be a respectable listener. The staff will collect questions from the audience. The last one is not a rule, but I just think it would actually remind people in the audience that raffle tickets don't rotate ways placed during the great time. Thank you.
Actually, to correct that very quickly, if you did not receive your raffle ticket, please go and put up one, because we had a chance to work with the Baltimore Ravens, and we have two free tickets for any lucky winner here to go watch a game. And it should be one of the good games, I would hope, sometime November, December. And I'm also just pretty good seats, so we do have the ticket voucher here. So the raffle will happen at the end of the forum around 3:30, 4:00. And that's when we're going to give everybody an opportunity to contribute, grab our raffle ticket, and then get ready. Sounds great?
Yes.
Okay, so we will go ahead and begin with the two-minute opening statements. And we can literally start from left to right. And we'll keep your mics there, and we'll keep the microphone there too. Sounds great?
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Good morning, everybody. Thanks for coming out. It's good to see you. I'm Chaiman Williams, and I'm running for county council, District 5. My top three priorities are school funding, responsible development, and a safe and healthy environment. I'm endorsed by the Sierra Club, by the Teachers Association for my pro-environment and pro-education advocacy. I've been an education advocate since my son entered preschool at a Baltimore County school that did not have air conditioning. I got together with some parents, and we made a stand around it, build a new school because of our efforts. I discovered then that I was a really good squeaky wheel. Later, we moved to Howard County specifically for the schools. And I thought everything was going to be fine, until I looked at the budget and realized that the funding is not keeping up with the school population. That's when I decided I would need to be as close to the funding source as possible. Professionally, I'm a travel writer. I used to work for Lonely Planet, and I've worked on their Thailand guidebooks for 15 years. With a name like China, I was attracted to faraway places. And China is my real name. My parents were hippies, my dad went to Hong Kong. So it's not a, it's very confusing for some people. And I'm currently the PTA Vice President at Tridentia Ridge Elementary School. I've worked with Mobilize Hoco on adequate public facility ordinances, just trying to protect the schools from overdevelopment. And I hope to continue my service with Kiwi as councilperson. And also, we'd like to say that Deb Gumm, Obel Jones, and Christian Ruddy said their regrets that they can't be here today, there's another forum at the same time. Thank you very much.
I'm John Lau, I think he's also a faculty member as well. So I'm David Donovan, and I grew up in Elkhurst City. Moved here when I was six. So I graduated from Mount Heverne. And for the last 18 years, I've lived out of a woodbine, so I've been in the district and the county for most of my life. My professional background is finance, budgeting, legislative affairs, and management, primarily in healthcare and Phil State. My priorities for the council, District 5 is a very, very unique district. Do you hear this District 5? So we have Elkhurst City suburbs, and then we have the rural west, which makes a pretty unique, unique district. But it's interesting, because even the folks in the rural west, you know, we think they want different stuff, but they really don't. You know, they want, you know, tight spending controls, low taxes, safe communities, and good amenities, or first-class amenities, the most important, which is the school system. My community service has been, I've served over six or seven nonprofit boards with wiring commissions, everything from library to my industry to Chamber of Commerce, financial education. Been involved in some big zoning matters through the years, some other community leadership things. So I want to represent District 5 and the county council, to put my own for a very long time. And I thank you guys for having me.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for hosting. We appreciate it. Good morning. My name is Lisa Kim. I'm your county council candidate in District 4. I live in North Laurel, near Mapleon. That's one of the tail ends of our district. We have a long, skinny district. So North Laurel, Mapleon is one end, downtown Columbia is the middle, and River Hill is the other tail end. I'm a wife. I'm a mother of a nine-year-old little boy who goes to Fulton Elementary School, a school that is overcrowded, that went from zero to nine trailers this year. I'm a former financial analyst for Lockheed Martin under the Hub Space Telescope Program, and I am currently a small business owner. I've had a small marketing and advertising firm since 2002. I'm a former neighborhood launch president, and I volunteer weekly with local children and adults with special needs. I'm also a nonprofit boardmaker. I am the first non-Asian, non-Korean boardmaker for the Korean Society of Maryland. I am a three-time elected legislator from Prince George's County, where I earned a reputation as a strict legislator. I'm intolerant of bias, corruption, and favoritism. And I work with the state of Maryland, Prince George's County, and Dot Ramada and the community to secure the 16-mile light rail purple line that connects four Maryland suburbs. I'm cognizant of the taxpayer and the taxpayer burden. I passed a four-year constant yield tax rate for the benefit of the taxpayer. And I stopped a $16 million tip for property and land that has since been developed without one dime of tax ceremony. When I'm elected, I will ensure that the school overcrowding issue, the haphazard land use and development, and the proper spending are valuable taxpayer money. It will be on the forefront of my work on the council, in service to you, and only in service to you. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you to Kappa and the Korean Society for this great forum. My name is Raj Kathuya, your candidate for county council from District 1. I am a small business owner of the Yoto Trade and a 32-year resident of Howard County. I came from India, just like most of you guys came, with a $20 bill. To this day, I carry a $20 bill to remind me who I am and where I came from. What I am going to be working on, the biggest priority that I'm working on are schools, schools, schools. And at the same time, we need to have smart love, smart growth, and also we need to work on characteristic experiences. It is time for us as Asian populations to come up and take a forefront of what's going on in the county. And I really appreciate it. We must want to get there. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Liz Walsh. I'm also going to represent District 1, which includes Elkhurst City, Eldridge, Columbia, and Hanover. I went to Mount Heverne High School and graduated from there in 1989. I earned a National Merit Scholarship to Jordan Tech, where I majored in civil engineering. For four years after school, I worked for a national general contractor building things, mostly bridges. And then I went to law school. So for the last 20 years, I have been working in private law practice, mostly writing contracts, contributing contracts, and representing construction industry clients in litigation, arbitration, and disputes. Running for office is not something that was on my list of things to do this year. I have two small children who are both in elementary school. I have a big old house in Old Elkhurst City that seems to be falling apart in the meantime. And it was not, again, something that was on my list of things to do. But the more that I started to pay attention to what our local government was doing and what was not doing in terms of land use regulation, in terms of controlling the overdevelopment, and the effects that it was having on things like our kids' schools, our roadways, our parks, our watersheds, it was too much for me not to take a stand. And while there were good choices in some of the other districts, like China, and District 5, and the race in District 3, where Christian Ruddy is not here today, but sends her appreciation, I needed that choice in District 4 and Elkhurst City, particularly with the flooding. And so with my background in civil engineering, in construction, and law, I will bring that experience and that education to serve my district as we rebuild Elkhurst City and as we control the overdevelopment that is crowded at our schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, candidates, for those wonderful opening statements. We will now go ahead and start moving to the questions. First up, we're going to have questions directly from our local and Kappa presidents. Again, candidates, you have one minute to respond. And we will start with Ms. Jean for the first question.
Thank you so much. So these questions are on behalf of Kappa, Loke, King Chinese School, and the Chinese Language School of Columbia. And we would like to ask you all the questions. The first one is, can you name a few issues that Asian community cares about? Please be specific. Thank you.
What about the take friends? The next one, Raj.
Okay, thank you. For me, and I believe for most communities, the issue that matters most is the schools, is our kids' education. And the fairer being the education that I think brought all of us into this community to raise our families. And again, given the consequences of overdevelopment, given the fact that the schools can't keep pace with the new students who continue to pour into them, especially in District 4 and Elkhurst City and Eldridge, getting the control over that, I think, is an issue that he might follow us. A second issue that's of concern to me is our aging population. My parents live in the same house where they lived when I graduated from high school. And I worry about their mobility, I worry about their ability to age in place, and I worry, again, that our public services for that population is not adequate, given the fact that that population will be here and continue to grow in the coming decades. So taking care of our kids and taking care of our elders are primary focus to my county. Thank you.
So schools is one of the biggest issues that we, as Asians, are concerned about. We often, mostly, for the school system in Howard County. It's not just the Asians, I think, it is everybody in the county. Every citizen, doesn't matter, every gender, now. And at the same time, for us as a community, taxes, same thing, everybody's worried about the property taxes to go up, should be doing certain things. So we need to be, we need to be careful to who we meet today. And also, we need to be very careful as to how we move Howard County forward. Taxes, schools, we need to make sure that we have businesses. I was a retailer myself, had liquor stores and restaurants. And also, we need to make sure we have smart love, and those will be some of the things that I, you, and the Asians are concerned about.
Thank you very much. I know that schools and education are on the forefront of the Asian community here in Howard County. I know, you know, we all are aware of the overcrowding issue, but also the academics. We know that we can do better as far as programs that we're offering, we can stop cutting programs. And I know that the Asians are very concerned with the academics as a priority, so that's something that we want to do in the schools. We want to make sure that when our kids graduate from school in the United States, that they are able to compete in the global job market, and right now, we are failing on that regard. I also know that quality of life is a concern, low prime. Let's continue to prosecute even the lowest-level criminal offenses, and let's not introduce extra criminal element into our county for essential rights and mistakes. Taxes and fiscal responsibility. We all contribute a lot of taxes to Howard County. We work very hard at our small businesses, and we provide a lot to the county on tax base, and we want to make sure that it's being spent responsibly. And I know that Asians also want to maintain their cultural fabric, so let's make sure that we do that, too. Thank you.
Like I said in my opening, when I was talking about the district, I think this probably is the same for the folks in this room, because most of us moved here for the same reason: high-quality life, safe communities. Just a little bit on the schools, to go on what Lisa said. There's a tendency, we talk a lot about the achievement gap right now, and there's a tendency to try to close that by bringing up the bottom, but also let the tops slip down a little bit, to make sure that we keep our edge for the higher-end STEM programs and solve that achievement gap from the bottom. Controlled spending is a big thing, and see lots of retired folks in this room, and it's not cheaper in Howard County. And if we let spending run away, taxes are going to go up, and it makes it even harder for you to do the things in your retirement that you want to do. So if there's other concerns that a community has, my group would always be open, and we'd sit down and talk about those. But I think that most of the things we want from our county government are about the same. So thank you.
It sounds a little repetitive, but of course, schools are definitely one of the number-one issues. Supporting the aging population is important as well, so that people have, can live social and active lives and get to get transportation to the doctor, the grocery store, and to community centers. Make sure that county provides that service to support the older residents, as they should be respected. And then make sure that our county continues, we do a great job, but we need to continue to support cultural appreciation, language access, and support for cultural diversity.
I have a second question. What have you done in the past to benefit the Asian community? If you are elected, how do you plan to serve the interests of the Asian community? Please be specific. Peter?
You can start from Raj.
Okay, sounds great. So what I've done for Asian community, I am the founding member of Indian籍 Asians of Howard County. I hope that we have 4,000 people in our group. And not only that, we do a lot of, we've shared a lot of events with Kappa and also the Korean Society, to make sure that we all can understand everybody's culture. And at the same time, I think, you know, as a real person, I have worked hard with other organizations to make sure that we are all, you know, together and we all can work together. We have to live, work, play, and educate, and it's in Howard County together.
Oh, this is a great question for me, I can nail this one. I'm a first non-Asian, non-Korean boardmaker for the Korean Society of Maryland. I've been serving there for over three years now. I do the grant writing for the Korean Society of Maryland. I have helped the Korean Society of Maryland get funding for our Korean festival that will run here in Howard County. I also have helped the Korean Society of Maryland become involved with the local government and also the legislation that may affect Asians and your quality of life, actions that are important to you here in Howard County. I've also been the liaison between the Korean Society of Maryland and our elected officials. And I've also helped to bridge the language gap and the language barrier between Korean-speaking Americans and English-speaking, primarily in the government. So I've done the letter-writing, I've done the request to have elected officials attend events, I've written articles for the paper and for other social media-type things that are important. So I have been vastly and deeply involved with the Korean culture and Korean American society in Howard County.
Well, I can hear a lot of these people interact, part of the Asian community. So as far as what I've done in the past, probably the most recent thing is involvement in, we all worked really hard over the last few years to make some changes in school leadership, and it was one of the best experiences in the world, because everybody, no matter what their political persuasion of party was, all worked together. So I hope we can get back to that. And again, other than, you know, safe communities and those kinds of things, I think, I'm going to be honest, I'm going to have to rely on members of this community, people like Jenny and Jean and folks, to constantly be helping me engage with the Asian community, which makes up from close to 5, 6, 7% of my district, to make sure we're giving you the things that we need, other than things that everybody needs, if there's special things that we need. But it is such a critical, big, growing, wonderful part of Howard County, so I'm open to that. Thanks.
I'm engaged a lot with the Asian community in my children's school through the PTA. I'm the PTA Vice President. I'm the one that everybody feels comfortable coming to. And a lot of PTAs in Howard County is considered predominantly Caucasian. And then there's another group of Asian-American families that work together, and sometimes there's a bridge, and sometimes there are not. I'm the bridge in our school. I'm the one that reaches out, I'm the one that people feel comfortable coming to. I've lived overseas, I've written, I've traveled extensively, I'm just one of those, I'm the one that people feel like they can talk to. And my son does Lego robotics, so go FLL, everybody else does that as well, and I help out with his children. Thank you.
In the last two years, I have, again, paid more attention to what local government is doing in terms of schools and land use regulation. And to the extent that we can pressure our representatives to pay more attention to those issues, the better off we all are. The one thing I noticed when I didn't shout to my own elected official was that he didn't listen. He didn't return calls, he didn't return emails. And like Chaiman said, someone that you represent, someone that you elect to represent, you should be hearing this call, should be hearing those concerns, and should be responding to them. So I promise these schools will remain always a priority until perhaps in your service, there's no better way to go, but I can imagine that ever being the case. But I will always be there to listen. It has been a benchmark of our company that the constituents are the special interest, that the people that we represent, the kids in our schools, that's who we take care of. And so if I'm not doing a good job taking care of your kids and your schools, then call our office, and we will do better. We will listen.
So I have a third question from our community. What role do you vision Asian Americans can play in Howard County?
Thank you. So when I joined the Korean Society of Maryland, I have to say that, you know, there didn't seem to be a lot of involvement in the government and legislation by Korean Americans and probably by Asian Americans in general in Howard County. So we started attending events together. Four members started going and attending events in Howard County. Any event that an elected official put on, in legislative meetings and that type of stuff. So what we did was we showed our presence, because a visual is very important. So we showed that we cared, we showed that we were interested. And then when legislation or government matters that we felt affected the community came up, we made it a point to ask for meetings. We made it a point to go to those meetings, and we were very informed, and we made our demands known. So what we can do moving forward is we can build on that, and we can keep active in that fashion, and we can let our elected officials know that, you know, we care about what's going on here in Howard County, we have a loud voice, and we have a big voice, and we have a lot of votes, and so we expect you to do what we want for ourselves here in Howard County. Thank you.
I'd like to connect groups. We, I'm a reporter at the Chamber of Commerce, and we've tried to do this, and a couple other constituencies have tried to do this, but you guys will tend to have sort of your own group. And it might be a Caucasian group. And just trying to get those groups together for joint meetings, joint activities. I know that there might be a cultural or language barrier. Figuring out why we can't get the various cultural groups that are all working on the same thing together, I think is a huge priority. Because I'm looking around this room and I know that there's retired doctors and scientists and teachers and folks in this room. And our county needs that talent. Needs that talent engaged back into the community. So whatever we can do to get you guys in to serve the next generations, I think, I think we need to be doing would be a huge benefit for the county. Thanks.
Asian-Americans should definitely play a role in every aspect of the community and the government. It shouldn't just be a specific Asian-American position. I'm excited to see people involved in the PTAs. I'm excited to know about the medical volunteerism groups that exist within the Asian communities. More, more of the county should know about those options and applaud the work that's celebrated. I'm glad, I was very glad to see Asian-Americans get involved in the Mobilize COCO debate when we were looking to try to strengthen AFO. That was a great addition. We all came together on that. And then I was also glad to see Asian residents join with other residents in the anti-mulching debate that affected District Five. So activism, volunteerism, and then roles in local government would be excellent. Thank you.
One of the first things that you notice when you attend county council meetings for the first hour or so is the nominations and appointments to all manner of boards and commissions that serve our community. And now having watched so many of those over the years, I realized it seems to be a lot of the same people. There, I was delighted to see a young Asian woman appointed to the commission board in the last meeting. That is really important. And that's how you infiltrate, like David was talking, into the government and making your voice part of government's voice. And as an elected representative for D1, I will make it a priority to make sure that we're not seeing the same names and the same faces on all of those boards and all of those commissions. We need our government to reflect what our community looks like. And that is diverse and vibrant and celebrated.
What would I do for Asians? I will make history for Asians. So I will be the first county council ever in Howard County charter once, once elected. So that would be a history for all of us. And at the same time, being an Asian, I understand a lot of the issues. Thirty percent of Asians' population in District One. And we have zero representation at this time. Thirty percent in District One, zero. Twenty-four percent within Howard County, we still are zero representation. It is time for us to come up and start being part of the decision-making. And that's what I'll do.
Thank you, candidates. And now we'll move on to the questions from the audience. Okay? So again, one minute to reply. The first question that came up was, do you support sanctuary county status for Howard County? Why or why not?
I do not support sanctuary status for Howard County. I want to keep the community safe. It's been debated. It's been voted on. A decision has been reached. I don't have an interest in overturning that. I support the county executive's current policy. But the police will work with ICE in criminal matters. I think it's working. I'm not, I'm not seeing a big spike in crime in this community. But I would definitely keep an eye on it to make sure that we stay safe.
The fact of the matter is that in effect, we are a sanctuary county. We have written policies now that the police will not discriminate on the basis of immigration status, country of origin, and religion. We do not cooperate with federal authorities in pursuit of immigration laws. I do not see any reason why Howard County would have any policy that would have the effect of discriminating against any population. I think the diversity of our culture, I think the array of countries, of people of countries, of origins that live in our county is what makes us so special and so different. And I would do everything in my power to ensure that all of us are treated fairly and with respect.
So I came here in 1986. I came here with $20 in my pocket. And through hard work and hard work is how I achieved my dream. I want every immigrant to be able to achieve their dream. But I want them to achieve it the right way. I would never vote for sanctuary county. I want sanctuary county.
Thank you very much. I do not support sanctuary county status in Howard County or anywhere in that county. As you know, Montgomery County, since they became sanctuary, their violent gang activity has gone up 67%. Their gang-related robberies have gone up 36%. And their gang-related assaults have gone up 43%. So we don't want to introduce that here in Howard County. And we have limited resources. We're talking about, we don't have enough money for schools. We don't have enough money for roads. We don't have enough money for anything. So why would we introduce something here that's just going to cost us money? Now, I hear an argument made that if we become sanctuary county, people will feel like, you know, they can go to the police when a crime is committed against them. That's, that's a falsity. If someone commits a crime against you and you want to go to the police, aren't you more likely to go to the police if you know that they're going to be deported? And probably less likely to go to the police if you know they're going to show up back in your neighborhood in three hours or never released on their own recognizance or with no bond at all? So no, sanctuary county, never will I vote for that. Thank you.
I keep having to follow these great, these great speeches. I do not support sanctuary county. I testified against it for all reasons. Some of the practical reasons, the enforcement reasons, stream of resource reasons, crime, et cetera. I'm not going to be condoning. So I will vote no.
Well, thank you very much, candidates, for answering your questions confidently. Now it's the second question. The elderly population in Howard County is increasingly repulsive. What is existing issues and how, what is existing issues now? And how do you plan to improve? Thank you. Oh, this is Lisa's question. And the question is, what is expanding? The elderly population, aging population, okay, senior population in Howard County is increasingly repulsive. And existing issues now, so how would you plan to improve? Thank you.
I think expanding things like capital tax credits that allow aging populations to stay in their homes as they age is something that we should continue to look into. I also am very concerned about our aging population's ability to get around, which we need. And to get to places where they want to be, like social centers or community centers where they can hang out with friends or exercise or zoom in schools or even see their families. Majority to me is a huge issue that we are not doing enough, right? And how to service, not just the elderly population, where the disabilities are not just simply able to drive around. But getting our elderly population out of their homes and continuing to improve them in our communities, I think is the best way that we serve them and respect them.
Thank you. Couple of things. One, absolutely, we need to work on some tax credits to make sure that our elderly population can afford to stay and care in Howard County. As we all know, our taxes keep going up and we provide services. And at the same time, having been through my dad's four years ago, the issue, what, at this time, the transportation is terrible in Howard County. So what we need to do is come up with creative ideas where we can just have Uber-style services on demand, call and get the service right. And hours and hours for a relevant transit to come out here and take you guys to doctor's appointment or take somebody to whatever. So that will be a couple of things that I'm very passionate about. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm very passionate. As you know, in Howard County, our senior population will be growing 1,124 per year over the next 18 years. So it's going to be a big part of our population. And so we're going to have to plan accordingly. We're going to have to think about funding now. So when, as the aging population continues to grow, we are going to provision with economic services. I would like to try to work out some type of, sorry, some type of plan in Howard County where instead of always looking at putting aging seniors into homes or some type of assisted living, that we offer the family members who take in, their parents and their grandparents, some type of service where we can help them either financially or with tax credits. But, you know, we want to make sure that we can give the seniors a good family. That's, I think, the priority. And I also like an idea, you know, public transportation on demand. It's not really sort of an option sometimes for seniors to make it to a bus stop or something like that. So let's create a Uber corridor or Lyft corridor. And let's create some type of public transportation on demand for seniors. Thank you.
Everyone, we can start talking first. Keep your taxes low so you can afford to do the things you want to do. Keep families together. And like you brought up, the, you know, if you take in an elderly family member, need to retrofit your home and do some things for safety and accessibility. We can provide government grants, loans, tax deferrals to help keep families together and create a safe environment at home. Everybody's touched on the transportation part. Transportation is a huge challenge. And the green buses, one, aren't going to effectively service my district. And two, for a lot of seniors, you can get to a doctor's appointment. A lot of times that private car or van-based transportation is best. And then the last thing I would add is continuing to expand social opportunities. We have great retirement centers, not retirement center, senior centers here in Howard County. And just like we were talking about inclusion on political issues, if the Asian community's not, not participating in the things, senior centers, find out why and make those more accessible. Thank you.
So isolation is the number one health risk for seniors. And it means that they don't get out and experience the health benefits of socializing. Connecting aging communities with each other and with younger populations and their families are important for every community. And it's important for every neighborhood to be as diverse as possible. And that means age-wise as well. I've benefited from elderly neighbors. My son would clear the driveways for them and make a little bit of money. And those, those kinds of experiences are important to maintain that people stay in their communities and their neighborhoods. So we need to work on ways to make that happen through transportation support and with the Asian-American community, language support, and then social activity support.
Thank you, candidates. And now we have another question from the audience here. My daughter told me she would feel very uncomfortable if she sees a man in girls' room. Do you three transgender individuals can use restroom of their choice? If yes, how would you respond to my daughter?
My son, okay. Well, I, I agree with her. At this time, there is no need for transgender bathrooms. And I just agree with that.
Thank you. I, I also agree that transgender bathrooms is not something that we need to have that is specially labeled. People have family restrooms and this type of thing, or unisex restrooms. But also, I, I think that if you're living your life as another gender and it's, it's how you live, I don't think anyone really knows if you're a man or a woman when you go in the restroom. I think the concern is for the people who are trying to take advantage of it and who will go into a restroom to assault a woman or to assault a young girl or to do something perverted. And I think that's where the fear is. So if, you know, we've got to be diligent and we've got to make sure that we're not allowing that to happen in our society. But if you're living your life as another gender, I don't think anybody really, really knows. So, but I don't think we, we need to have transgender restrooms. And I, I don't support, you know, a man throwing a wig on and walking into a girl's room. I just, I just don't think that makes any sense. Thank you.
I would actually repeat just about everything Lisa said. It's amazing to me, the places we go, the convenience store, where there's two single powder rooms. And one's as men, one's as women. And four guys are in line while nobody's in the other one. I don't know why, we all just can't have unisex bathrooms, private bathrooms. But we need to create a safe place for the kids at school. You know, if you're going through this as a kid, it's probably pretty scary. So while I certainly don't want public transgender bathrooms, I think that there's accommodations that we absolutely need to make in the schools. Things like family restrooms and those sorts of things. So, thank you.
Okay, so I would be a little bit unnerved if a man who identifies as a man walks into a woman's restroom. That said, if you are transgender, if you are gender neutral, I don't have a problem with that. And I would put myself in their shoes. How do they feel they just need to go to the bathroom? That seems like a human right. And if that's where they feel comfortable, I'm okay with it too. Honestly, the ladies get a lot more privacy when going to our stalls. The only time we see each other is in the line. And I don't know if I've seen a lot of bathrooms here. There's a lot in the men's room and not the ladies' room. Usually it's the other way around. And we also see each other when we're washing our hands. And I'm okay to stand next to someone washing my hands.
I think I may have lost track of the question. I have a six-year-old son. And as a single parent, I am frequently out and about with him. And so that poor baby is going to go to a ladies' room until he's like 18. And I'll probably stand outside the window like, Grandma, Grandma, what's going on? Like, I am the most protective mama that you can imagine. And it is harrowing. Every aspect of our lives is harrowing when you have a young kid and you imagine all the unimaginable things that can happen to them. But like China said, that is somebody's baby who wants to use that bathroom. I don't think, I don't think this question is aimed at a grown man walking into a regular old bathroom aiming to harm a young child. I think it's just someone who's probably going through something very difficult, very personal. And that that person is entitled to respect. And so I will tell my daughter, and I hope the person who asks this question will tell their daughter, is that we all come in different shapes and sizes. And I will respect and value all of those different shapes and value the sizes. And if that means that a certain person wants to use a certain bathroom and they feel more comfortable there, as long as they need no harm, it's no harm. No problem with that.
Thank you, candidates, for answering your questions. And I thank you for everybody in all this school have been asking great, very, very thoughtful questions as well. The next question is, it's in my profession, I mean, it's only, the county's general plan. I think the obvious means the general development plan. And the design guidelines need to be updated regarding zoning in the commercial area. What would you suggest?
Oh, thank you so much. Yes, so we are in the middle of doing our rewrites. We had a two-year assessment of all of the zoning and code regulations for development. Something we did realize is that all of our code and our regulations are very archaic. They were set in place to develop Howard County. But they aren't really supporting the redevelopment of Howard County. So that's sort of what we're struggling with right now. As far as the commercial base goes, the first thing we can do is we can stop changing commercial value to residential zoning. So that's one thing we can tackle. That has nothing to do with our code. As far as the code rewrites go, we need to make sure that they are supporting the redevelopment of commercial centers. And we are having an eye on what is needed for the future moving forward and modernize certain things. You know, we have a lot of issues developing that's going in. It's built-in prime tell for commercial businesses. So let's continue doing that. We're going to continue the gateway development, the makeup on development. And, you know, let's just keep focusing on building the tax base and make sure our zoning and our code regulation are putting us in a position where we can continue to move forward and modernize and build this tax base. forward and modernize and build this tax base.
I think one of the big keys, and we could all be completely different answers, and we probably wouldn't hit everything that needs to change, and so we could. One of the big things in the process, it's a lot of community engagement upfront, and then it tends to go behind the curtain. And that's where deals get cut, where rules get set, and people get away with stuff. So I think there's some parts of the process that need to be done earlier. Parts of the process that need to be moved up, so we have more information about things, need to be much more community-based. Still, insane people over and over again at zoning hearings. Figure out why the public is not participating in the zoning process. There's a million technical things I would change as far as density in the West, and I'm not going to get into all that in my last 15 seconds. But a big piece of it has to be the way to get the community more engaged and make more of the process transparent with the community.
So from a budget perspective, if you have a community that is getting older, you are looking at reduced revenues. And one of the ways to boost that is either to build more houses or boost the commercial sector. And I think there's a ratio that is the ideal ratio that shows that you're a healthy community with a thriving business section and a thriving residential section. Howard County's not there yet. It needs to increase its commercial area, its commercial zoning. And one way to do that is not to unzone commercial areas. What's happened along Route 1, helps our primary corridor, it was, it had the access and the transportation to other residential areas to find workers' jobs. We've squandered an opportunity there. We have to look at ways to make up that loss and to ensure that people live in great places near, by their workforce.
Hi, I'm Kristiana Rupi. I'm running for county council in District 3. And because I came from another forum, I missed what the question is, though I'm guessing it's about zoning. Oh, well, yes, I missed. So I missed half the answer, but I cannot imagine there's a person on the panel who does not support increased, increasing our commercial base. And it's especially frustrating, like China mentioned, where we have many, many properties that are changed from commercial to residential. This is something that happens all the time, and it really needs to be sought out when we're doing comprehensive zoning. It needs to happen when we're doing our general plan. And that, we actually need to plan it out and go with the plan and not change things after the fact after people purchase commercial properties for less and then change it to residential. It's just not right.
Hi, my name is Deb Young, J-U-N-G. And I also just came from another forum, so I apologize for not being here right at the beginning. I think it is very critical that we ensure that our commercial base is strong. The commercial property has been appreciating at the rate of approximately 14.2% per year versus our residential base, which has been appreciating at about 2.4%. So what would we like in terms of property taxes? Probably more of a commercial base than a residential base. And we have more residential coming in than commercial. So we need to do everything we can to encourage commercial development, which I think, number one, would be, many of the things you've already heard, which is make sure that we're not allowing residential to undertake commercial zoning. And number two, do everything we can to encourage commercial, more commercial building to occur in the gateway.
The best thing about commercial base is that they don't contribute in our schools, right? We get increased property revenue, or tax revenue from them, but they don't place the same burdens on our public services that a residential development would. So that's why all of us, I think, unanimously would say, of course, what we would do as your next representatives would be to do everything we could to develop that commercial base, build that revenue. And places like Korean Way on 40 here in Ellicott City, Old Main Street down, um, Old Ellicott City, and even in Elk Ridge, Route 1, there are so many opportunities for our government to plan comprehensively, to invest and revitalize those communities and prop them up, to support the small businesses that make those places special, where people celebrate and gather and go again and again and again in places that we're clear about. That is the job of government, is to prop those, those small businesses, those local small businesses, and, and help them be the placemakers that they are.
So in the past four years, county council has either upzoned or rezoned 9,000 units. And that's a lot of residential housing. And we have very little commercial. At this time, our commercial inventory is about 17% tax base. We need to increase it to at least 20%. 4% of our total inventory is retail. And I know a lot of us are in either liquor store, restaurant businesses, or other retail businesses. We understand retail is the economic division out here. We, we need to make sure that we need to have more retail so that we can make ourselves better. That's what we do. We work hard for that. You know, we come in eight o'clock in the morning, go till 10:00, probably, in the evening, in our places, so that we can do all this, add more retail, and add more commercial. That's what I do. And no residential zoning for now.
And candidates, and that's our next question. This is a bit of a long question, so we can write a little bit down. To make budget balance in addition to increasing funding, to cut unnecessary spending and make government efficient is very important. Can the candidates please discuss their plans for government efficiency by reducing unnecessary spending? I, I am big for one. Again, to make budget balance, I'm going to literally read it exactly how this is in the heart. To make budget balance in addition to increasing, increase funding, to cut unnecessary spending and to make government efficient. Can the candidates please discuss their plans for government efficiency by reducing unnecessary spending? Or how would you reduce? I guess the question is, how would you reduce unnecessary spending to make the budget balance, to increase the funding, and how to figure out where unnecessary spending? I think I got it. One minute. So the way to reduce sort of government waste is looking at duplication of services, things that we have five different departments doing, that we're streamlining to one. I know that everything from permitting to, there's just a ton of steps in everything. It's frustrating for citizens because there's so many steps. But every step requires a government to really touch it, process something. As far as growing the top line, we just don't talk about it. Guys, we're in the part of the tax base. And I think that's how you keep the budget under control. You know, you have good sustainable revenue growth, continue to look for efficiencies and deliver your services.
Process is probably the best place to look. A lot of the nonprofits would like for the county government to do a multi-year contracting system. And that way, they can do a better job projecting over many years, because most projects that get started aren't just one year, they're several years. The county has been resistant to do that partly because their revenues aren't set for every year. But there should be a way that they can provide more efficiency and strategic planning if they were to do multi-year budgeting. And then I think also we can just grow the budget. We have great services, let's maintain them, and let's look for ways to increase revenue not on property taxes, but in other areas. For example, increasing the fees that the developers pay when they do add more requirements for services onto the community.
So one of the largest sort of budget areas, budget items when it comes to our county budget is our school system. So one of the biggest opportunities would be to work with our school board, to work with the superintendent, to make sure that our school system is functioning and that we are not sort of doing some of those things where we have a duplication of services. There are things that we do within our school system that the county government also does, and that's another area where we can look to remove the duplication of services, especially because so much of our budget goes to our schools. I have two kids. I totally support our schools, but I think if we're looking for places to, to really be more efficient, our school system is.
Just a couple of days ago, Peter Franchel announced that as a result of the number of things that occurred over the last year, our state revenue is projected to be up $325 million this coming year, which is a 4.1% increase, the largest increase in decades. So that is a very significant thing and something that we here in Howard County should hopefully be able to take advantage of. So we need to make sure that we are bringing back the bacon from the state. There will be a lot of money that should be flowing into education, and I hope that Howard County will get its portion of that. The FY 2020 budget is projected to be $18.7 million with a 3.3% increase, $407 million. And that is something that Howard County should be bringing back.
I 100% agree with China in that we build our, our revenue base so that we have more money coming in, and we go after alternative sources of funding at state and even federal levels, especially coming from Old Ellicott City. I know that there are a lot of expenditures in our future there. And just like I said, there are the same, same names, same faces that are here in our county boards and our commissions. My sense is it's the same names and the same faces who are getting no big contracts to do a lot of the work in our county government. And that there's not a whole lot of oversight in terms of how contracting is let out and how it's monitored for long-term. And that is an opportunity for us to look into and make sure that we're getting fair value for the services that we're purchasing, and that we're getting fair value back for the purchases, for the, for the sales that we are, that we're giving away. Howard County has a number of resources, but we have to be diligent in protecting them. And being thrifty with our purse is the best way to do that. And coming with my construction background, I know what it's like to get bids, to, to rank bids, to make sure we're getting the best value for what we're buying. And I'm not certain we're doing that now.
So I would ask maybe a reader, we need to look at the duplication of services. And here's one example. How many of you get oil change? Everybody, right? So at this time, today's time, when you are, when county is getting oil change with our vehicles, we pay $500 for oil change. But are we using a gold filter? That's what, that's what we need to look at. We need to look at the services, where we can see where we can, we can get, get the services by looking at the duplications. And, you know, a $35 oil change should not take $500 for the county to do. And that's going to, thank you.
Thank you very much. Duplication of services, redundant administrative staff, and let's streamline those within the county. I agree with Raj, one of the things that really gets me going is when I see government waste to the extent of $500 for an oil filter, or $600 for a toilet. It is completely unacceptable, and it is highway robbery of you and me and all of us. It's our taxpayers that are paying for that. Remember, the government doesn't generate any money. It's our money. But being an elected official from Prince George's County, I can tell you, I've tackled this before, and here's what we do. The department heads know where the pork is. The department heads know where the fat is, and they know where their waste is. So what we need to do is we need to get on the county council, and we need to direct the department heads to cut 10% from every department. And they will do that. They know where that fat is, they know where that pork is, and they will do that right away for us. I guarantee you, we can get a 10% cut across the board, nobody will blink an eye. Thank you.
Thank you so much, candidates. And now welcome three, these three candidates are just one of us, Deb Young, Christina Reddyby, and also Oco Jones. Hi, Oco. The next question is, you see everybody, Oco and I agree, we sit around the same conclusion as another story. Anyway, the next question is, if you are elected, how will you listen to inputs from residents in the areas that are outside of where you reside?
Good afternoon, everyone.
I'm so sorry, actually, you're beyond each China room. I'm sorry, that's a boy, everybody. Listen to residents outside the district, just want to clarify real quick, is that right? Yeah, okay. So I think that campaigning, although it's quite grueling on candidates, it's good practice for constituent services, because you go to all the events outside of your district. I can't tell you how many times I leave my district to go to an event, and you meet the community leaders, the neighborhood association president, and then there are folks that you need to connect with to make decisions that will affect the entire county, not just your, so I think that just by being, attending the events. I used to live in Baltimore County, we had a great council person. He showed up. We sent him an email about everything. Park day, fill down and scrape their meat, we should, we sent him an email, he got practice. So being open, accessible, and showing up at the places is the way to count.
So I think it's really important when we look across the county to be responsive to everyone. I can't tell you the number of times that I've just sent an email to council mail and felt like I was emailing it to the void and not gotten a reply back from someone who wasn't my council member. It was really frustrating. So if you didn't email me, I will reply to you. I even set up a tour with Kate Olinger, who's a farmer who lives out west. He wants to take me and show me around his farm, talk to me about soil conservation efforts, and I'm going out there. We have one farm in District 3, over the southeastern portion of the county. But I think it is really important to have input because the council decision affects the whole county. So it's very important to know what's happening in other places.
I'm looking at Roger, so it's still morning. So good morning, everyone. My name is Oco Jones, I'm running for county council in District 2. To answer the question, yes, all of us, once, if we are elected to the council, we are serving the entire council. I plan on listening to any and anyone, any and everyone who wants to talk to me, whether it's via personal contact, email, call me, 410-300-4822, my number is public, it goes right here to my cell phone, text me, email me, I definitely want to talk to you, even if we do not agree. There's people in this room right now, and people in this dance right now, that we have totally different ideologies, but we can still break bread together, have a cup of coffee together, or maybe a beer, and talk about some things to bring the county forward. So that's what I plan on doing once on the council, and I challenge you to reach out to me for any issues that you may have.
Well, I've already started doing that. People have asked me from outside of District 4 to take a tour with them, to look at their, their flooded front yards, or a cul-de-sac that has wrecked havoc in their area. And I've taken those drives with them, whether it was in District 1, District 3, District 2. I think it's critical for us to be responsive to everybody in the community. We don't just represent our individual districts, we represent Howard County. And I make sure that I tell that to people all of the time. It's a Howard County council, not a District 1, District 2, District 3, District 4, District 5 council. When we make our decisions, we're making them for everyone. And I hope that we will have town, I, I certainly would plan to have town halls, to have coffees where anybody would be invited to come. And, and I would like to continue doing meet and greets, so that people would be invited to come. This would not be a fundraiser, but an opportunity just to come and, and meet me once I'm elected to the council. Thank you.
Even though we're elected to represent a certain district, all of us, whoever ends up on the council will be making decisions and will be making laws that will apply to the entire county. So it is so important that we understand all of the perspectives and all of the inputs that we should as we do, as we make those laws and make those decisions. There are some issues that are so specific to a given district, like how a given property will be built. Should it be upzoned to execute any more residential units? No. There are others that span the whole county, like schools or infrastructure. And that is where everyone really needs to pay attention, we all have a stake in it. And then there are other instances where Bayonne City has a specific flooding issue, and that it seems like it's very specific to District 1, but it's the consequence perhaps of open development. So how the, how this specific location deals with that issue ultimately will hopefully inform how people state county-wide. The one thing I think, the main reason I listen to anyone who will talk to me is because we do have an incredible sense of resource at Key Lors County. we do have an incredible sense of resource of people in this county. The breadth of experience and education that people have, we should utilize it in every year we come.
And I agree that any decision as your representative for District 1, the decision would be for the entire county, not just District 1. So we have to be cognizant of that. And at the same time, as, as your councilman or even before the candidate for county councilman, I would travel through Howard County and that that is my aim to make sure we all live, work, play, and navigate our place within Howard County, not just District 1. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to go now, who just joined us, and he's the candidate for the 2nd district. And I'd like to repeat a question for him, just, he just came in. If you are elected, how will you listen to inputs from residents in the areas that are outside of where you reside? Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize for being late. I was called up by an event previously and they wanted to speed up planning over here. Good morning, good morning. I'm John L, running for county council in District 2, East Columbia, Opamans, Low Ridge, South Elk Ridge, and Dobbin Commercial District. To answer your question, I think the most important thing for District 2 is that right now we need to have District 2 lifted. We have a series of problems that need to be addressed immediately. We have a lot of school overprovision issues, we have traffic congestion issues, we need to create a better economy, we need to create more jobs for more residents there. Only by lifting up District 2 in every aspect of politics can we lift off the rest of the county, and that's what I'm running for. Thank you.
Quality and high responsive constituent services is what I'm known for. It's how I operate in Prince George's County and it's what I plan to do here. If you sit on my website, you see under constituent services, I have a plan. Every Friday, I will hold a luncheon and anyone in the county is welcome to come in, break bread with me, have a drink, eat, chit chat, and we'll talk about what's on your mind and what you want to see for yourself in here in Howard County. It's very important for us to also attend events, go on out into the community, let the community know that we care, that we're interested in what's going on with you and what's going on in your life and in your world and in your part of the county. So while we are, you know, elected by District, we legislate with an at-large mentality. And so I will, I will do that, I will continue to do that. And I've already been contacted by several residents in Howard County. I'm already doing constituent services. I got a speed monitor placed on Gorman Road in District 3. So I'm already working for you, I'm already getting the things done for you that we want for you.
Obviously, returning emails, we're being willing to have meetings and go to events. I think we're all going to be good at that. But I'm going to rely on my fellow council members too, because this is a pretty smart bunch of folks up here and I think we all like each other and get along. And I love the fact that Keith said you laugh a little bit at farms. It's fantastic. The parts of not having to run a campaign. And, you know, like just take me for instance. I'm going to need other people on the county council to understand the real rest. So it's fantastic that somebody like Christina or Lisa or somebody who's willing to go out and sort of learn from that. It's going to be up to Liz or Raj to make sure that the rest of us understand where Old Elephant City leads over the next few years. Lisa and John or Opo have debt to keep downtown Columbia moving. They're your first resource, but then you need to rely on them to get all the rest of us engaged, because when it comes up time to vote legislation and fund things, you know, you're going to need all of us. That's it.
Thank you, candidates. And now we're going to move on to a separate topic here. The bottom question is, 50 years ago, the top three concerns of teachers and schools were, number one, running, running in the halls, number two, butting up in line, number three, chewing gum in class. Today, the top three concerns of teachers are, number one, rape, number two, assault, number three, burglary. What would you do to reverse this trend?
Wow. Yeah, so, I mean, that's really horrible. I think that our schools need a lot more support when it comes to social workers and people personnel workers, working with our students, working with our teachers, making sure that our student communities and our teachers face included and connected. I think really increasing the, the number of social workers and people personnel workers that we have to work with in our school system would be a great step in supporting our teachers who is in need of support.
Rape, assault, and burglary are things that none of us should give them about, especially educators. For those of you that don't know me, I'm an educator, I'm a teacher. I teach mathematics and conceit at Grand University. Commuting now, I've passed through several communities, made progress, I can make my way to know from SDC, coming back home, sneaking through the county sometimes, depending on traffic. And I see, I see lots of things. But I think first and foremost, our police department, which is one of the finest police departments in the region and not in the nation, as well as our first responders, we just continue to have funding for them, make sure that they're able to do their job and that the time, if you were to call 911 or if you were to call a police or a response, that time is decreased as much as possible. But for educators to think about those things are actually quite difficult. So I hope that educators can keep their mind focused on the students in the classroom, as I do, and that we can have a wonderful, safe school system here now.
When you cut services to the schools, when you increase the class sizes, when you make the teachers do more than just educate, you have behavioral issues, disruptive behavior. Teachers need to be able to teach, and they should not be social workers or psychologists or other mental health providers. Those need to be provided by trained professionals that are working in the school. I think that Howard County is doing a really great job when it comes to mental health support for their students. I've reached out to the counselors at both of my children's schools about issues. I think that, I'm a teacher from Baltimore County, I'm acutely aware of what it looks like when a school becomes more disruptive and more violent, and that's from slashing the budgets and stressing out the resources in schools.
We do push way too many things down to schools. Half our principals are struggling to be principals, half our teachers are struggling to be teachers. Expecting them to be mental health experts and social workers and law enforcement officers is really hard. I have been talking to people about creating a team that, you know, when, when, when the school population identifies a child that's in distress, that's at risk, whether it be dangerous themselves in school too, we can have a team of us, whether it be mental health experts, counselors, healthcare people, law enforcement, whatever that team needs, so that the school system can not hand that child off, but get them connected with an interdisciplinary team that can intervene with that child before they do become a victim of some sort of violence. And to take this burden off of the teachers and the in-school folks that are already dealing so much.
I'd like to take more of a no-nonsense approach. If you do something that is completely egregious in a school, you're out. You're expelled. And then if you need services, we can give you the services outside of school. And then when we feel that you can come back to school and behave and not hurt other people, then maybe we'll send you to a different school. But the coddling of people who don't care about other people needs to end, especially in the school system. We don't, you know, it just gets in the way of other kids' learnings. And that's not fair to the kids who are, who are there behaving and who are, and who want to learn and who want to do well. So let's not worry so much about populating our statistics report in the school system when everyone's doing great, and let's handle the kids that need to be handled and get them out so they're not disrupting. And it always starts at home. You know, it, you know, kids who are, who have this level of violence in them, you know, they get, students wake up and have this, you know, there's something going on, so let's address that as well. But, but let's take a no-nonsense approach inside of the schools. If you're, if you're doing something very, very egregious and violent in the school, you've got to be expelled. It's just not fair to the other kids.
Thank you, thank you. First of all, I want to ask everybody to recognize that crimes, drugs, in schools, all over Howard County, is a serious issue and that need to be recognized. It's not just you think there's no, there's only drugs in certain parts, no. There are drugs everywhere and they're at every level of our school. So I ask everybody to recognize this question. As councilperson, first thing I would do is that my door will always be open to teachers, parents, anybody who have problems and then they would like to talk to me. My door will always be open and I will be available. We need to support our teachers, they're overworked and they don't have resources to prepare overcrowding number of kids. That need to be addressed immediately. And then lastly, which is also the biggest thing, I will look for ways and fundings for after-school activities, sports activities, summary youth activities, to have these kids doing something after school. Because if they don't have anything school and lack of proper village centers or community centers, this is where crime will, crime will bring up. And then these are issues that we need to address immediately. Thank you.
And I'd like to thank all the government, our county executive, and also the county council, who has added some security resources into our schools, which was very much needed. And I think we, we can add some more to it. And at the same time, we have to look at the value of the piece, which is, we have overworked teachers, too many students in our classrooms, and at the same time, there's economic development issues on us. So we need to work on all those things together. We can't just ignore one and do the other. So we have to work all together to make sure that we have less to do in the class and also less bring some economic vitality into our community so that, you know, we can get there by the end of the year.
In the last four years, the average class size of every class in our Howard County schools has increased by 12, and that's a continuing trend. It is unfair for us to expect our teachers to be able to teach our kids, spend the time with our kids that our kids deserve when we continue to pack their schools. The notion that even a child could run in a hallway is laughable in many of our District 1 schools. I am recently endorsed by the teachers, the local teachers even, and I will admit that they do not name those three things as their primary concern. They name other things like moldy portals that they teach their kids in, or overcrowding classrooms, or the fact that the kids are eating at the wrong time of day because they can't funnel all of the kids through a cafeteria in a given schedule. We have to address the causes of overcrowding, that's the best way to make our schools safer. And right behind that, we do have to fund resources like social workers and more support staff for those schools. I will say though, that in, in going around the neighborhood, I did meet a principal of one of our two one schools, she was worried about her ability to discipline children. So I have to note that and, and will, will entertain that as a council member in the next three years.
My mom was a public school teacher for 35 years. And I can tell you that some of these serious behavioral problems even existed back then. So this isn't something brand new. I too have been endorsed by the Howard County Education Association, and I'm very proud of that endorsement, because the teachers know that I will do everything possible to make sure that our schools receive what they need to deal with any of these issues, whether it's getting more teachers in the, in the classrooms so that our school, so that our class sizes are smaller, or whether it's ensuring that kids who have been totally disruptive are no longer going to those schools. And I will say, that is happening right now. So if a child is not behaving appropriately, they will be expelled or they will be asked to go to another school. That is not something that's not occurring. And I want to say, because so many people have already mentioned all the things that we can do, here's one thing that we haven't talked about, and that is starting school later in the day for high school students. And why is that critical, thank you? That is critical because it means that kids are not overtired and dealing with mental health problems, and it means that kids won't be home in the afternoon for four hours before their parents get home.
Our candidates and the presidents are keeping coming in, they're all great presidents and we can tell plenty, a few of these are very interested in learning. There's another plenty of senior candidates. And also before I start reading that question for the four candidates who just joined us, each candidate is giving one minute to respond, to respond one question. Thank you. And the next president, where do you stand on Section 8 housing entering Howard County? For example, there are 48 units entering Foxville. Would you need proposed or constructed 43 units in Foxville? Okay, thank you. Let's start with Opo. Thank you.
So, affordable housing, Section 8 housing, those people coming amongst us, I think it's very important that we get to the root of the matter data-wise, factually-wise, and understand exactly what Section 8, affordable housing, all those things mean. Not the lore, not the cultural bias that comes along with it, what does it mean? For example, for example, you can be in a Section 8 house, which is a humongous, beautiful 300, 400, 500,000 houses that the government subsidizes, all that jazz. What kind of family lives there? Hmm, what's the first picture that comes to mind? I won't get into that here, but just understand the facts, understand the data. Where do I stand on Section 8 housing? Well, I'm not familiar with the legislative coming from a council perspective, but I'm in support of whatever's going to bring revenue to the county and whatever's going to keep us safe. For example, if Section 8 housing in a particular area happens to bring a spike in crime or bring a spike in whatever that we're all, that we are all concerned about, it's something to revisit. So that's my stance on it, just on top of that.
Do you want us to go this way or do you want to circle back?
This goes from left to right.
Okay, sure. So there are already so many people in Howard County living in financially tight circumstances. They're already paying over 30% of their income towards housing. So when we talk about affordable housing, a lot of that is really actually just making units affordable for people who are already living there. Another huge issue facing not just our county, but across the country, the lack of units for people with disabilities and mobility limitations. So I talked to so many parents who said, one of their biggest fears is what happens to their child after they die. I mean, it literally keeps me up at night. So by making sure that their children are not experiencing homelessness, I think that's one of the biggest things that we could do. We have nearly 200 people on a waiting list who have a disability, who are waiting for a voucher for housing, but the housing doesn't exist, there isn't a place for them to use their voucher or that it takes their voucher. So we have people in really dire circumstances, so I think we do need to really think about and to believe about this.
It's going to be hard to have a good conversation about this because Section 8 means something bad to people. But I will say that affordable housing is a problem in this county. Affordable housing needs to be located near jobs because transportation is a problem in this county. We, so when we look to try to make sure that our teachers and our first responders and our firefighters and moderate income people can live in our county, we've got to make sure that they're also able to access jobs. And we also need to make sure that there's a, when it comes down to it, I actually think that housing is just a symptom of a much larger problem, and that's wage stagnation. I would like to see wages increase across the board for workers and for low-scale workers. We, we should invest to make sure that they are increasing their skills so that they can earn more and support their families more. If they don't, then the burden falls on the community and on the schools. It costs us more than one home.
Just going to go back to data and a lot of it's financial. We need enough affordable, whether it's moderate income, Section 8, whatever it is, housing, to bring companies here, to get them the housing stock that they feel like they need to bring employees in, to deal with our disabled community and our retirees, folks that are here that are struggling. Beyond that, a lot of what you've heard from us today is strained resources, strained resources. So I don't want us to get to a point where we're doing so much affordable and low-income housing that we're just loading more burdens on the schools. that we're just loading more burdens on the school system, more burdens on the childcare system, and more burdens on, you know, all of the rest of our infrastructure.
Thank you. Our Section Eight program in Howard County, which is actually called the Housing Choice Voucher Program that's been renewed, has a forty-five million dollar budget. So we want to ask ourselves, you know, do we want to keep increasing these budgets? And, you know, given our strained resources here, it's something to really have to look at. I've been piecing together the number of subsidized units that we have in Howard County because believe it or not, there's no place to find the data. We keep hearing that we need more and more, but when I ask the question, how many do we have? How many people are in them? What are we spending? Nobody has the answer, but they're very sure that we need more. So from what I've pieced together, we've got about sixty-one hundred units already in Howard County. So that's something that this question we need to have publicly about, you know, the direction we want to go. I will say that I don't support a forty-eight unit subsidized housing or Section Eight housing unit because, you know, all studies show that we need to spread it out. That's what's best for communities, that's what's best for children, that's what's best for the schools. So if we want to bring forty-eight units, let's do that, but let's place it all throughout the county and work it out because all studies show that that's what is best.
Thank you, and actually thank you for asking this question. It's a very important question. In fact, at the forum that we just had, we also had the same question asked to us. And then I think Christiana and that here in the front positions me, I have stayed there. So both David and Christiana mentioned data. And I think if we look at data, we can all agree that there is a high concentration of affordable housing units in District Two in certain pockets. And certain pockets across in District Two and across the county just do not have these affordable units. So number one, we need to look at the redistribution of our affordable housing cares and pay some needs. And by these needs, we need to look at things, not just like, oh, take care of the housing, housing component of these people. We also need to look at do they need transportation? Not everybody has cars. We need to increase public transportation and get them access to that. And then secondly, we also need to look at do they have grocery stores? Do they have amenities within walking distance because the car component is not there? So these are the things that we need to address along with when we talk about affordable housing policies.
So we also know that in Columbia, there's going to be about nine hundred units coming in that are already planned, that are part of the Columbia infrastructure to be planned. At the same time, I am in support of any affordable housing that's in purchase rather than rental. I think you get a different ownership mentality in purchase rather than in rental. So in that sense, that's what I would like to see. I would like to see some more of it and absolutely need to discuss it between other times, the other areas of the county.
We are lucky to live in a very wealthy county and the barrier to entry to living here is so high, even for people who make a decent wage, that that is, I think, why at a certain level government decides to favor an array of affordable housing, not just for young families who are moving in or firefighters or teachers who aren't making the same income that a lot of the rest of the county is making, but also our aging population, especially for our seniors who are on fixed and limited income. They need a place to visit, they want to stay and be part of this community. And I think that they should be given that opportunity and I would support that. I don't know specifically about this project that's being mentioned now, but I do know that in regard to enforcement of land use zoning regulations, that I do see and I do not like a lot of excuses and waivers being made for what is described as affordable housing does not excuse compliance with otherwise existing regulations like the environmental setbacks or a certain number of units on a given driveway. You still have to comply with the law, but we can comply with the law and still take care of those who do.
While we call this affordable housing, really it's workforce housing because most of the people who live in these units are working and they can't afford what a lot of us here in this audience can afford. Now, let me tell you what the numbers are, and they're not that hard to find. Nine million six hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars was spent through the federal government on what are called choice vouchers. That's seven hundred and twenty-nine families here in Howard County, and that's five hundred and fifty vouchers from other jurisdictions. That's a total of around thirteen hundred, which is one percent of all of our households in Howard County who are getting a housing that is affordable enough that will allow them to live here and work here. In terms of what the Department of Housing and Community Development has, their yearly budget is six million dollars, and they have many units all over the county that are spread out all over the county, again, for people who are moderate and low-income, who are working people and who pay a good portion of their salary for rent on that moderate and low-income housing. Let's do everything we can to support them.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have exactly eight minutes, so this will be the last question, the final question for today. And the question is, Chinese-Americans and Korean-Americans all speak their own businesses or look forward to opening their businesses. What are your plans for fostering a pro-business environment and the creation of jobs?
Just imagine what it's like in the primary.
I think that, oh, hello. I think that having a pro-business environment is very, very important. Creation of jobs, creation of businesses is what makes our country run. I think that we need to have an environment where when the entrepreneur business is opening, when they bring those papers and the processes down at the courthouse or down at the George Howard building, that that's a very smooth transition and is very welcome. If there's any help or any assistance that anyone needs to open a business, that those are readily available, either be a website or a person, and there can be training, training for those that need that. Additionally, I think having more and more businesses, more and more small businesses, brings down prices for everything. For example, if there's more grocery stores that are more, what you would say, modern pop shops, they can compete with the bigger grocery stores like Wagoners or Target or Walmart to be able to bring all the prices down on the level. So my stance is that we need more of that, and I would be happy and open to listen to any ideas that would bring more businesses to the county, streamline those processes for everyone and for Howard County to up to and forth.
Thank you. So my dad owns his own small business, my husband owns his own small business, and I agree there are a lot of barriers. I think that our Economic Development Authority here in Howard County can do a better job of reaching out, especially to diverse communities and really bringing more people in and seeing and asking you, what can we do to help? How can we support you? I think those are very crucial issues. Because there's only one minute left, I just want to tell you, you can find me online, I'm on WeChat. I don't have an opponent for the generals, I'm kind of your person. So if you do have issues, if you live in District Three or you just want to communicate with a future council member, please reach out and help me out. Thank you.
For retail businesses, we want to make sure that there are predatory rental agreements happening in the county. And there are instances of that. So the county would want to make sure that they're protecting businesses and making sure that large un-creditory agreements aren't being passed down to the business owner. Business owners also need a reliable workforce base, and that's something that every small business struggles with. Making sure that people can live in Howard County, work in Howard County, save in Howard, and get into Howard County and avoid traffic also helps to support businesses. So I think a lot of the quality of life issues that affects us as residents also helps to support small businesses as well.
So every component of this answer, people, it's already come up. In no particular order, government processes. It is brutal. I hear from retailers, small other businesses, to get permits and every little thing that feeds the county. I have to be doing a better job of that. We talked about housing. You can't grow your business if you can't get staff, if you can't get employees. A lot of that staff is going to need transportation. So it brings us back to the public transportation and accessibility of the transportation system. Beyond that, it's just the overall economic environment, keeping your taxes low, attracting a good consumer base here, so that when you have everything you need to run a good business, you got trust, you got profits.
Thank you very much. Let's continue the development of downtown Columbia, Maple Leaf and Gateway. Let's create more places for there-to-be businesses, number one. I know that some of our industrial businesses have not a lot of choices here in Howard County, so when they're up for a lease renewal, you know, their leases are going way up because the landlords realize that sort of stuff. Let's take advantage of our location. We're between Washington DC and Baltimore, we are in what is called the Cyber Court. So if you're looking to open a business, I would suggest going into that industry. And let's continue to give priority to Howard County businesses. If you are in Howard County and you are a business owner in Howard County, you have priority for Howard County government contracts. Not a lot of people know that. So make sure if you see a government contract that you're interested in getting, that you make sure that the government knows that you are based here in Howard County. And let's just overall continue to not raise taxes on our businesses. They are the small businesses or the backbone of our economy. They are the economic engine of Howard County and in our entire country. So let's make sure that we do everything we can to keep that moving forward and to support that and to grow that. Thank you.
It's all right. So thank you once again. So I cannot say how difficult or how hard and how brave the business owners have to be to come over here, especially coming to a foreign land, to open a business. Dealing with overhead alone is a big headache for most of them or discourages a lot of people. So I applaud every business owner that we have here, especially from the Chinese and Korean communities. Regarding what we can do forward, I think first, we need to make sure that the ground is fair and safe and that you will always have the resources, including legal resources, when your business is in danger. Second, we have to get people into the county because we have good people in the county. And where there's people, there is opportunity for business. And I want to make sure that we have minority-owned businesses in youth development areas. It's that, so come to Gateway, get your business park in District Two. District Two is open for business. We have an incubator program that's marvelous coming up, and then we welcome your business and first diversity over there. Thank you.
So I am one of you. I already, I have owned hotels, I have owned liquor stores and restaurants. And currently, I am also working on a multi-race renewable energy startup. But I, five years ago, or about eight years ago, when I was going through building my own restaurant, and I can tell you this, two and a half years, that's what it took to build a restaurant. Paperwork after paperwork, permits after permits. It just kept kicking the can down the road. That's what we need to work on. We need to work on making sure that our government is in twenty-first century, getting deep lead so that we get permits, we get our businesses right away. Can't wait two and a half to three years. You lose a lot by doing that, and that's what's been happening. Our county is losing a lot of revenue because of that.
I see two ways that our government can help this community and their small businesses. The first is making sure that you're aware of the resources that exist in terms of small business loans or training or incubators, but also making sure that those services can be improved if they need to be and also that they're accessible in terms of language barriers. I hadn't thought of it until I heard some of the other colleagues tonight, today speak, that those resources may be there, but if you can't find the form or you can't find the right person to ask the right question and you have difficulty communicating with them, then it's not going to do you any good. A second, more tangible way, the people up here on the skies can help you in the next four years as you approach your next small business, is treat zoning the way it should be treated and keep retail and commercial businesses zoned that way so that you're not competing in your rental fees with someone who instead would like to build a bunch of condominiums or some other residential units. If we focus and plan on developing cohesive small business quarters that create a way, like through one revitalization in like Main Street, we make it better for all small businesses.
I am also a business owner. I'm an attorney and I have my own business I practice out of my house, but I have to pay the same taxes as any business owner. And one of the things that I would like to see is a reexamination of the property tax on the state budget on small businesses. I've seen how that can have an effect, particularly those of you who own equipment because that is how you are taxed every year. So that's an important thing. I also want to see our village centers that are owned by Kimco treat our small business owners much better than they have in the recent past. We've seen, at Wild Lake, we saw small business owners going out of business. We're seeing the same thing happen now at the Hickory Ridge Village Center. This is unfair to our community and it is unfair to the small businesses who have spent their lifetime creating these businesses, restaurants and dry cleaners. So we need to make sure that when we have a landlord like Kimco, that we are protecting first our community and our small businesses.
Thank you, candidates. Ladies and gentlemen, if you can, again, please give a big round of applause to our candidates. And on top of that, I'd like to mention these few, Alan Fittelman, China Williams, David Youngman, Dan Young, Elizabeth Walsh, Jennifer Mallow, Lisa Ken, and Raj Kathriya. These individuals made this forum possible today by sponsoring this forum. They're the ones who helped us put this together. So again, to those folks who sponsored this event, thank you so much for mentioning. On top of that, we do have, if you are not registered to vote, we have a line at the door right here for you to come and register. And that we are ready for November fifth. We also have water and pizza available now, so if you're hungry, please take only one and get the rest of it, yes? And lastly, we are going to break from now for our second portion. And before we break, please pull out your raffle tickets because we're going to have the president of Loca and president of Kappa come forward and pick two numbers or two gift cards or Amazon, twenty-five dollars. So if you're rapping, it's on twenty-four dollars right now, yes? Okay, first number. Five, six, nine, two, five, six. Five, six, nine, two, five, six. If they are not here, they do not get it. Okay, next number again, please. Five, six, nine, two, five, one. Go for it. There you go, okay. Forty-five dollars. Let's get it started, here we go. Five, six, nine, three, two, five. Five, six, nine, three, two, five, okay. Here we go, here we go. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our candidate forum for this portion. Again, please enjoy the moment with pizza and food and ask any other questions you have for your candidates. Thank you so much for your time.